Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 10th Planning Commission meeting for the City of Dana Point and ask Vice Chair Bowen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right, please stand, face the flag, and ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right. Which brings us to the next item is roll call.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present at today's meeting.
Great, thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes from our October 13th Planning Commission, any comments or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to approve the minutes with one minor correction.
Okay.
And the correction is under consent calendar. It should be written there was no consent calendar item, no item on the consent calendar. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'll second with that correction.
Great, that's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to public comments, anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form that's available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for public comment portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Moving on to agenda, there's no consent calendar, so we're on public hearings. Item number two, which is a variance V 25-0001 and a site development permit, STP 25-0010. Do we have a staff report?
Alyssa Gonzalez has your staff report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Alyssa Gonzalez and I am the project planner for the project located at 33911 Caile La Primavera. Is that gonna come? Oh, Monica. There we go. All right, so the subject property is located within the RSF 7 zoning district as well as our Lantern Village. It is surrounded by single-family residential uses and is located directly across the street from St. Edward the Confessioner Catholic Church. The surrounding zoning districts include RSF 22 to the south, RSF 7 to the west and north, and community facilities to the east. Additionally, this is a vacant lot and it's 7,009 square feet. Here are pictures of the lot. I do want to mention that in 2019, the Planning Commission approved a variance and a site development permit with a similar scope of work to the subject project, and I will go over that with some comparisons in the later slides. And also here you can see that is the staking that is out there and that has been certified. Here are some of the adjacent properties. I do want to go into detail real quick about 33921 Caile La Primavera as well as 33901 Caile La Primavera. And just before I get into that, there's a photo of the adjacent rear properties which are off of Paquito Drive and they share this canyon that's there. So at 33921 Caile La Primavera, this is located within the RSF 22 zoning district, which contains development standards that are smaller than those of the RSF 7 zoning district. Additionally, this property was granted a front yard setback variance from the county in 1975, which allowed a nine-foot front yard setback, allowing the structures to be constructed on the flatter portion of the property. As for 33901 Caile La Primavera, this is located within the RSF 7 zoning district similar to our subject project, and this property was granted a variance through the city in 1988 and allowed the conversion of crawl space into habitable area, creating a third story exceeding the two-story height limit at the time. And here our proposed scope of work is the construction of a 4,405-square-foot, three-story single-family residence with an attached 462-square-foot two-car garage. Now, two entitlements are required for this project. We're looking at a site development permit and a variance. A site development permit is required for the construction of the three-story development in accordance with the hillside conditions, and then as well as for a retaining wall greater than 30 inches located within the front yard setback area. And in response to the height standards that are noted within the hillside condition, a variance is being requested. This includes a request for height, and that will be from 29 feet to 44 feet and five inches as measured from the lowest point of the structure, so that's going to be the overall height of the structure, and then as well as from 14 feet to 21 feet and eight inches as measured from the upper street curb elevation to the third story, and that is specific to the hillside condition. We'll get into that with some elevations. Here is the site plan. In red is the setback line, and as you can see, the structure is within the buildable footprint and is meeting all the applicable setbacks, most notably the front yard setback of 20 feet. Additionally, the slope of the lot is 44%, which qualifies this as a hillside condition lot. And then another site characteristic that is notable to this project is that there is a 16% cross-slope at the front of the property, which requires that area to be filled to create a driveway that contains a compliant grade. And then I'll go over that in a later slide with the section so we can see that. As we get on to the floor plan, so this is the main entry and it's located on the second floor, which features an open concept. We're looking at the kitchen, dining, and living area that leads to a balcony. This level also provides internal access to the garage and includes one bedroom and a full and a half bathroom and a laundry room. And then, as mentioned earlier, there was a previous variance in site development permit granted for the site. The left image is the previously approved floor plan back in 2019, and to the right is an overlay of the previous approval and the proposed floor plan. And as you could see, not much has changed here with the square footage. And then upstairs to the third floor, there's a master suite with an in-suite bathroom, the two additional bedrooms, two additional bedrooms with in-suite bathrooms, and an entertainment room with a full bathroom. Balconies are located on both the front and rear elevations of this level, and again, just to note, these balconies aren't projecting into our setback areas, they are within the buildable footprint. And then here we are again with an image of the floor plan from the previous approval in comparison to the submittal, and again, as we could see, not much has changed here. And now moving downstairs to the first level, which is situated below street grade and includes one bedroom with an in-suite bathroom and access to the balcony. The several also contains mechanical and storage rooms which are non-habitable. Now, majority of the differences between the 2019 submittal and today's submittal can be found on this floor plan. Here we can see that the open space and storage areas have been changed to habitable area. In total, there is a difference of 426 square feet between the two submittals, and although there was an increase of square footage, the actual footprint of the structure was not expanded upon for this current submittal. Now, this table highlights the development standards of the RSF 7 zoning district and the applicable hillside condition standards, including floor area ratio. The proposed project meets all the development standards except height for which the applicant is requesting a variance. As noted earlier, the subject site contains a 44% slope and a 16% cross-slope at the front of the property. Consequently, in providing the required 20-foot front yard setback, the structure has been pushed back from the street and thereby increasing its height. Here's the front elevation as seen from Caile La Primavera. Pursuant to the hillside condition in Section 9.05110, the proposed structure is limited to a height of 14 feet as measured from the curb elevation, and in this case, the elevation from Caile La Primavera. And here, the structure measures at 21 feet 8 inches. Now, the proposed single-family dwellings appearance from Caile La Primavera is similar to that of its immediate neighbors relative to the number of stories visible and the relative height of the highest roof element above the street. Each house two or three feet lower vertically than the next as the street descends. And to reiterate, both neighboring properties were granted variances to address site-specific constraints and topographical challenges. Here's the rear elevation and which views the rear yards of those of Paquito Drive. Pursuant to the hillside condition in Section 9.05110, the proposed structure is limited to a height of 29 feet, given that the roof pitch is less than 3/12ths. The total structure height as measured from the lowest existing grade is 44 feet 5 inches. In this elevation comparison, we can see that the structure is about nine feet shorter than its neighbor at 33901, and that is also within the same zoning district. And again, at 33921 Caile La Primavera, which measures at 33 feet 4 inches, but as I mentioned earlier, has a front yard variance which pushes the structure up more, and again, is within a different zoning district. And due to the site's topography and the proposed fill needed to provide vehicular access to the two-car garage, a retaining wall with a guardrail is required to facilitate access to the stairway, as we can see here. The retaining wall requires a site development permit, and beginning at the front of the property line, the guardrails stand independently at 42 inches in height, and as the grade slips downwards towards the garage, the retaining wall and guardrail combination increases in height, reaching a maximum of 10 feet 3 inches at the garage entrance. Here we can see it highlighted in the red box. And again, this is going to be the north elevation, and we've provided here an image just to see the 44% slope relative to these elevations. And here's an elevation comparison to 33901 Caile La Primavera looking northward. As you can see, the structure is pushed back like from the neighbor, and to reduce massing, there are multiple balconies towards the rear. Now, the structure is built upon caissons, thereby resulting in minimal grating under the proposed structure. And although there is proposed fill at the front of the structure, none of the fills supports the proposed structure and therefore meeting a hillside condition requirement. And again, we can see here, that's where the fill is towards the front, and again, with our height from the lowest existing grade, since this is built on caissons at 44 feet 5 inches. Here are some renderings. The proposed project features a contemporary architectural design characterized by an open floor plan, expansive windows, and a built-up flat roof, and we can see exterior materials with smooth stucco, wood siding, metal trim accents, and glass guardrails. To conclude, the subject project meets all the applicable RSF 7 hillside condition standards, and although requesting a height variance, the subject project does not constitute the granting of special privileges, as there are several homes in the area with similar topographical conditions that receive variances to address these conditions. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve variance 25-0001 and site development permit 25-0010, subject to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. Thank you for your time. I can answer any of your questions, as well as the architect.
Great, thank you for the staff report. Questions for our staff? Ms. Opel.
Alyssa, great presentation. Can you go to the cross-section and kind of walk through the height of the total height? Because in looking...
That one?
That one, yes. Because the 44-foot, whatever, 5 inches, it really is deceiving that height, because that's not really what the actual height of the three stories of the structure is. So can you kind of walk as to what is the basis of that calculation?
Yeah, so per our zoning code, height is going to be measured from either the lowest existing grade or the finished pad elevation. Now, since this is built upon caissons, the measurement is going to be taken by the lowest existing grade, which we have found through our site plan, which is part of the topography, so if we have, let me show you over here, so we can get an idea. So over in the corner where that structure is, we're going to find the lowest existing grade from this portion, and we're going to measure it all the way to our highest ridge. That's where we're getting the 44 feet in height.
All right, so it really isn't the height of the actual facility, it's a structural... All right. So it really isn't the height of the actual facility. It's a structural, it's a calculation from structural, from the lowest point from that caisson to the top. So it's not because it's got huge floor-to-ceilings. It really has to do, because there's a lot of space. There's almost 10 feet below, a part of that, that is just pure nothing.
That is pure nothing.
And it just ties to the grade elevation.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just to confirm, this property is not in a homeowners association?
It is not.
Okay. But sometimes HOAs have restrictions with the view shed. And if you would go back to two slides, I'll tell you. One more. Just one more. Okay. No, one more.
One more. Keep going.
Yeah, this is the one. The way I see this is on the 33921, top of curb elevation is 20875. And on the subject property, the top of curb elevation is 2...
We have the 214.37, and then the one that we're measuring it is going to be from the lowest, because we're taking the most conservative.
Yeah, it's 209.9 is the top of slope, garage slope. So when you look at 21 foot, eight, that is measured from the top of the curb to the top of the roof, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I think that 299.5 seems to be wrong. That should be 209.5. Can't be 299.
Where are you seeing the 299? 209.9?
Below the 209.
Oh, the top of curb. Yes, that is incorrect. Yeah, that should be the 209. Yes, yes. That is a typo.
That's all.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't really have any questions. I just want to take a look at it because I was concerned about the email correspondence that we got where it looked like it was just a solid block that was blocking out like a living room and all that. But it looks like it's all, that area is all open in the decks, correct?
It is going to be broken up with balconies.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to call names and have you step up to the mic, starting with Randy Moore. Right there.
Hi. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Randy Moore. My wife Sheri and I reside at 33901 Caile La Primavera. Our home is adjacent and just to the north of the subject property tonight. We bought our home in 2021. We are in extreme opposition to this project. I wrote a letter to that effect that I emailed to all of you on Friday, November 7th. I also included photographs that kind of show the changing landscape of what this home would do. I also included a petition that was signed by 15 of my neighbors in opposition. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. I'm not going to read my letter, but I do want to kind of give you my sense of how I see this, which is I've got a new neighbor who wants to build a palace. It's close to 4,500 square feet. It's five bedrooms, seven bathrooms. It's got three stories with 10-foot ceilings in each level. It's got expansive views of the Pacific Ocean to the south, to the west, even on the side view of the home. And it's going to give my new neighbor quite an optimal experience, which is great for him. However, he can't build that home without getting the city's help. And that's because he's obliterating the city's own rule from 2006, which says the height can't be more than 29 feet on a hillside slope of more than 20%. It's very clear in the statute. So my new neighbor then has to create a hardship. And in this case, it's, hey, I've got a problem in my cross slope in the front part of my yard. I can't build there. We're going to have to push this house farther down the hill. And going farther down the hill, of course, is actually the steepest slope of the property. I would challenge anyone to try to walk that without falling. You'll have a hard time. But at any rate, the goal is to move this farther down the hill and in front of the property to the south, 33921, so they can get these expansive views that they want. And that's really kind of what's happening here. They need the city to kind of break their own rule from 2006. So the way I look at it is they have an optimal experience. But then what happens to me and my fellow neighbors? What do we deal with? Well, I think the photos that I submitted to you kind of tells the story. It's not just a loss of views, but it's sun, wind, privacy, the whole experience of living in our little neighborhood, you know, in our little nice neighborhood is really changing. And I think it devalues our property. I think I'm being injured here. I think the devaluation of my own property is in the range of $250,000 to $500,000. And so therefore, I'll end with this question. If you allow this to go forward, I'm going to ask the question of, well, then I'm going to have to build up and out to regain my property value. Will you give me a variance so I can do that? And that'll affect my neighbors as well. If I do my work, they'll want to do the same. I think this would never end. Thank you.
Thank you. Probably going to mispronounce this. Bob and Brenda. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for attending. I brought my red file since this is a hot item. I thought it was a joke. Anyway. So I've been a resident on Paquito for over 30 years. The landscape, obviously, there's a canyon in the middle with houses on Paquito and La Primavera. And this home is 4,400, I don't know, you guys haven't rounded it off, almost 4,500 feet. And it negatively impacts my view and the market value of my home. The average size of each one of these homes on the canyon is around 3,000 square feet. In fact, in 2017, there were two homes built, brand-new homes, without variances and without variances. And they were built on the hillside, a steep, steep slope. And they didn't come out. They stayed right on the slope. But to allow a home with 29-feet variance to a height of 44 feet, this variance, when you picture a house, is like the size of a one-story house. It's huge. A house's side would be a blight to our neighborhood, the whole canyon, as well as blocking portions of our view and negatively affecting the value of everybody's home on this street. I understand this is a spec home where the owners do not even reside in the United States. I know that's a side issue. The purpose of making a large profit at the expense of the surrounding neighbors. As a professional real estate agent, broker, with over 40 years of experience, I would estimate that the value of our homes will be decreased anywhere from $50,000 to $250,000. We have nothing against building a conforming structure. There is building codes for a reason, and we request that you enforce this city code. Thank you.
Paul Corlebecks? Is that correct? Anybody named Paul that... I'm sorry, Peter.
You got a Mary around somewhere, maybe? Hi. My name's Peter Cornheber and I live at 33902 Paquito, directly across the canyon from the proposed building site. 25 years ago, I came here and stood in front of the planning commission, asking for a variance for my house, to expand the decks a few feet so we could have some exterior space. We also would have loved to have built a three-story home at the time, but our builder, who had the plans approved by the city, told us we could not. So like the previous people before me, I don't understand why a variance of 14 feet would be allowed for a home that has been designed outside the parameters of the zoning when they knew what the zoning was when they designed the home. So clearly, the builder had some idea that they would be able to get this variance to build this six- or $7 million home that will block the views of my neighbors. It won't even really block my view. That's not my issue. My issue is this is too stall a structure and too big of a structure for the neighborhood. And then my last point and my only other point is what would be the repercussions for the other neighbors in terms of their desire to go up and out with their homes as a result of your approving this variance as well? Thank you.
Candy Corbeld.
Hi, my name's Candy Corbett and my husband Tim Corbett and I live at 33895 Caile La Primavera, next to the Moores. There's an attitude from the planning department that this project is prior-approved and a kind of a done deal. In late 2019, when the prior project at 33911 was approved, our seller at 33895 La Primavera had one foot out the door. In fact, he listed a home for sale in January of 2020. Our next-door neighbor Ben, who sold to the Moores at their address, listed his home later in 2020. So the two prior owners of the properties adjacent to 33911 that we're discussing tonight were both selling and relocated and offered no objection to a smaller loss of view. The stakes were actually up when we moved in, and the previous project was not as large and certainly not as deep into our neighborhood canyon. Attaching balloons now at the top of the stakes to gauge the proposed new heights in itself is a ridiculous variance. The project should not be rubber-stamped as prior-approved because we, the new owners, object to the view, loss of view. The proposed property is located two lots away from our home. The primary motivating reason to purchase our home was the ocean and canyon view. Our home will lose 35% to 40% of our existing ocean view if the city approves this current plan. The devaluation loss will be well over $200,000, and we strongly will oppose the site variance. The requested height variance is 52% more than the allowable, maximum allowable building height of 29 feet for structures in a hillside condition. Why does the 29 restriction even exist? The severity of the slope is a lot like a cliffside condition. Please check it out for yourself. The plan should move closer to the street. The proposed 4,493 square-foot house is 35% larger than the homes in our neighborhood. A trip down La Primavera confirms that single-family residences just won't look like that. They all range in about 300,000 square foot that other people have mentioned. Our neighborhood canyon, which includes the cross streets of Paquito Drive, is a well-established neighborhood. Why would Dana Point approve a monstrously oversized home that's pushed way down into our canyon? This home obstructively juts into the horseshoe-shaped canyon. Instead of being complimentary, it obstructs our views. Are the building fees and the new property revenue really worth the variances requested by a new LLC owner? It's simply this, isn't this simply a destructive and profit-making real estate investment just to be sold to others? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Vincent Jones.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Jones. I live at 25236 Manzanita Drive. We're not near the property, but we're just a few, maybe a quarter mile away. We have land next door to us in a similar position that was considered undevelopable for a long time. And in fact, I checked into the property when I bought mine about five years ago. I was told at the time, there was no owner other than the Headlands at the time, I believe, and they sold it to a private party. And anyway, this particular owner now, he's a builder. And I'm thinking, I might have the same issues down the road. So I'm a little concerned, very interested, know Randy. And so I asked, I said, I'd like to participate and see what I could do to help. Anyway, I'm opposed to this variance for the same reasons I've heard already, and that is, you know, you have a limit, 29 feet. That should be the limit. There are, I understand, variances that have to be looked at individually, but in this particular case, it's going to be a huge obstruction. It's going to block his views. It's going to devalue his home. I know that's going to happen if they build this with that particular variance of 14 feet above. So I'm here to support them, to, you know, I want to make sure that this community stays whole, it stays charming, and it's within the keeping of all the individuals that live here. And I think this particular structure would be an albatross and one that we'll be kind of sorry that we let go with the variance if that happens. Thank you.
Wayne Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you, planning commission. I live off, Wayne Ryan, live off right across on Paquito, 33882. And I just, two quick points. The statute of 29 feet to be taken to 44.5 feet is, it's bigger than you think. When you're looking right across, it pops. And if there's a statute, I don't understand why that's being breached. It's, the 29 feet is being manipulated, okay? And that part, again, you know, in support of all my neighbors, it's affecting all our resale values. And as a community, we're all just trying to do what's fair. And everything that's been said earlier by other neighbors, fellow neighbors, I support. And again, it goes back to the 29 feet being, the variance is to 44.5 inches, 44 feet, five inches, is very, very big. And you don't notice it until you actually take a look from across the way. And thank you. And that's, this 29 to 44.5, that's the big, big, whatever way you want to look at it, it's being manipulated and the view is, it's taking a lock. We're looking, I'm looking at the balloons on my side. As those balloons are going up higher and higher, it's pretty bad. And no one in this room would like that if they were in our shoes. So thank you. Thank you.
Richard Jürgen.
Good evening, members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Richard Jürgen. I live on Paquito Drive with my wife Lisa and my son Spencer. We lived in our home for 25 years, and it's been a wonderful place to raise our son and create lasting memories. The ocean view is not just aesthetically pleasing. It contributes meaningfully to mental well-being, property value, and neighborhood identity. It's part of why many of us chose to live here. We feel connected to the natural beauty and the environment. Blocking this view with new construction has direct and irreversible impact, not just on me, but to the entire community's shared landscape. The proposed structure appears to exceed the typical height or scale of surrounding properties. Instead of the reasonable and acceptable variance of a few feet, this project is requesting an excessive and unreasonable variance of 15 feet beyond what the city of Dana Point allows. It alters the character of the neighborhood setting and precedent that could lead to more obtrusive builds. Zoning or development guidelines should protect view corridors when possible, especially in coastal communities where ocean views... especially in coastal communities where ocean views are part of the civic identity. Loss of a view can significantly decrease property values, which affects not just me, but neighboring homes. It may lead to feelings of overcrowding and encroachment, especially in areas designed for open sightlines. The community's trust in thoughtful, transparent development decisions is essential. This project threatens that trust. When I bought my home, I did so knowing my ocean view was protected by municipal codes. This assurance was a key factor in my decision to invest in this property and it provided a sense of security and stability. The municipal code serves as a safeguard for residents, ensuring that development aligns with the community values and preserves its unique character. Allowing this project to proceed as proposed undermines these protections and sets a concerning precedent for future developments. I respectfully ask the council to reconsider the approval of this home in its current form and perhaps there's a compromise, a reduction in height, a shift in placement that allows for both development and preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Glushon.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rob Glushon with the law firm of Luna and Glushon. And I've had either sentence or privilege in sitting in your seat before on a commission in another city. So I know firsthand the challenges of balancing the rights of property owners to reasonably develop their property under the law and applicable codes with the rights of affected neighbors. And that's what you have before you tonight. I submitted a comprehensive letter, which time doesn't permit me to cover every point, so I would like to address what I think are the most important. Before addressing the finding that I do not think is in dispute, that could not possibly be made with supporting substantial evidence. I do have to tell you as a matter of process, we submitted a request under the Public Records Act back in September 8th, when we were first retained. We asked for every document, including project plans, that was in the city's variance file. Respectfully to staff, they didn't provide that to us. And when Mr. Moore went down last week, or two weeks ago, to ask for the project plans, he was refused. He was told last week, oh, it'll be posted on Thursday on the website. As a matter of law, anything submitted in connection with a discretionary action, which is before you today, is public. And there's no dispute that every member of the public has a right to those documents well before, three or four days before a hearing. With respect to the variance findings, you know, seven out of ten gets you to the, more than gets you to the Hall of Fame in baseball, but it doesn't get you the variance. If there's one finding that cannot be made with with substantial supporting evidence, you have a duty to reject and not grant that variance. And the one that I want you to focus on, that is beyond dispute, is that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or, and this is key, materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. What you didn't see on the staff presentation, but you do have before you, are the photos submitted before and after by the Moores and others. The balloons and the stakes that can be seen from neighboring properties. There's absolutely no doubt that this project will be materially injurious to the Moores and to other people. Finally, this isn't a winner-take-all, as one of the other speakers eloquently pointed out. This project can be downsized, can be made more compatible, can be made less injurious. And I invite you, if you haven't read it, look at the letter from our expert architect, Clifford Neiman, who says that. So you can have a good development, more compatible, less injurious. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gray.
Thank you for hearing from me. My name is John Paul Gray. I go by all three names. I'm here tonight to talk about what this project means to those of us that live in the neighborhood. I'm directly across the canyon from it. I live next door to Peter and you've heard from him. We see this thing as being a very large and intrusive construction on our view and on, functionally, our quality of life. One of the things I have not heard about from any other speaker is what the approval of this project would mean in terms of future projects, future applications to change some of the nature of what goes on, not just in our canyon, but in our entire town. We have a lovely town in Dana Point, we're all crazy about it. That's why I've been here thirty-five years and all of my neighbors have been here thirty-five years and we like it that way. And we're glad that you people are here to hear us when we have this kind of objection to this, you know, what we consider to be an egregious expansion of the codes. So one of the things I want to say to you is, I've talked to my neighbors about this. My neighbors and I will get along really well. It's a wonderful thing, I'll tell you. And one of my neighbors was more articulate than I am in expressing, you know, what needs, what this means to us to have this potential project. So I'm going to read you some of that. "We respectfully submit a letter to express our concerns regarding the proposed development. As long-standing residents of Dana Point, having lived in this neighborhood for thirty-five years, we take a deep and intense interest in the integrity and character of the community. We received two separate public notices regarding the project and visited the site on multiple occasions. Since Dana Point's incorporation, the city has consistently enforced a height-limit policy based on the lowest elevation point of the property. This policy was guided by residential development in our hilly and canyon neighborhood, ensuring fairness and preserving community character. Despite the steepness of the lot in question, neighboring properties with similar topography, including those on Calle La Primavera, Crystal Lantern, Paquito, Alicia, and Mariana, have adhered to these standards. We believe this proposed residence should be held to the same expectations and that the requested variance should be revised or denied to maintain consistency with longstanding city regulations. The proposed structure would exceed the height of adjacent homes by approximately eight feet. In a densely built area, such disparity would significantly compromise sightliness and privacy for neighboring residents. We find this aspect of the proposal particularly concerning. The neighborhood comprises both pre- and post-incorporation residences. Historically, pre-incorporation developments approved by Orange County, such as those near Alicia Drive and Zarzito, resulted in diminished privacy and property values. Dana Point's post-incorporation planning policies..." Excuse me? I'll be done in forty seconds. "Dana Point's post-incorporation planning policies, including height-limit based on lowest elevation, have successfully stabilized property values and guided responsible development, allowing that variance would represent a regression of less equitable planning practices and risk destabilizing the progress made over the past decades. In light of these concerns, we respectfully urge the planning commission to reconsider the proposed variance and uphold the standards that have served our community well. We love being in Dana Point and we don't want to turn it into something that is not attractive, that is not wholesome and healthy for all of us." Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Matt Brown.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll go short since you went a little long. When this first came about, I want to be a good neighbor and that's all I would ask you guys to do is be good neighbors. We love our city. You looked at my house several times in the photos on the house immediately to the left. I've heard a lot of numbers thrown around and I don't want to talk about technicalities, but my house is eighteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two baths. This house that you're going to approve or not approve is forty-five hundred square feet, seven bedrooms. It does not fit. And what I would like to invite you guys to do as good neighbors is come to my house. Sit in my living room and stare at the balloons. Stare at the forty-four-foot wall looking directly into my living room and into my privacy, completely blocking the entire canyon. I want to be a good neighbor, but it's got to go both ways. And I would encourage you guys to reconsider this project. It is truly jaw-dropping. I wasn't sure that I was going to be against it until I saw it. And the front of it is deceiving. It looks small, it looks quaint, it looks like it fits on the street. The front is not the problem. It's the back and it is monstrous. It is grotesque. It is a forty-four-foot wall, straight up, completely blocking our view. So I would encourage you guys, be a good neighbor. Represent us. You're welcome to come to my house anytime. We love Dana Point, we love being here and we want to be good neighbors, but this project needs to be smaller. And I would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. James Carlson.
Okay, I'm in favor of the project. I'm the architect. I've been involved with this project for seven years. I've been the architect for the first time, the first variance approval, and again on this time. The reason we did this house is that if you go by the city standards, the thirty-foot, the house would be way down the hill and the garage would be way up here and you'd have to have a stair and an elevator to get to it. It would look totally out of place. And that was the reason for the variance to begin with and the design. And we kept the design the same as the variance that you approved last time in 2019. And we've just added a little bit of extra space inside the space that was already there and made it habitable space. That's all. So if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer those.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll call you back up. All right, do we have any other speakers? Could you, when you're done speaking, fill out a card and play, give it to the planning commission?
Yes, my name's Jolene Zampell. I own two units at 33892 A and B. It's directly across from this home that they're trying to build. The privacy is crazy how it takes away from the balloons. The house that's, if I look at it, the house to the left, which I believe is yours, it's completely taking away a hundred percent of their view. I mean, it's just really crazy. You have to look at the balloons. I think it's really a bad call. I think if it was built back and it still allowed it to be on the same building drop, like the rest of the homes that are there, it would be fine. But it's not. It's like their house is here and then they have this building like this. Their house all had view here and now it's just like this. It's really, really bad. The balloons tell it all. And I hope that you make a decision not to allow it to be the size that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public here and bring it back to the planning commission for a discussion. Anybody want to start? Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
All right, there's, appreciate all the public comments this evening. Always good to hear your thoughts. As it relates to this home, based on our code as well, there's been conversations about the size of it being so large. So basically, by our code, it's allowable to go up to 5,256 square feet, allowable. And what they're proposing is less than that by about twelve percent. So it's within reason square footage-wise. It may not be exactly compatible to all of the other homes, but it's also a wider lot and they have this, what's allowed to them. And the other concern has been the height. So both of the homes on either side of this are actually non-conforming as well. So if you look at 33901, the actual height of that from bottom to top, as this one is being measured, is fifty-three feet. 33921 is thirty-four feet. This is forty-five, so it's like right in the middle of those heights. So it's not out of context for that. As you're looking at it from Caillou La Primavera, it actually fits height-wise within the other homes. It's just a lot wider. But again, it doesn't look out of place in the context of these homes. So with that, I am in support of it.
I'm sorry, if you guys could please keep your comments to yourself. This is a time for us to have a conversation up here. It's not going to help the case for you to interrupt the commission as we discuss this.
And the only other comment that I have is, there have been other variance approvals on hillsides based on a lot of this here, as the architect said. The issue is where the garage is. So where you're coming into the street, that really dictates the height of it, the depth of it. And we've had this issue on other homes that have required variances that have also been approved and have or have not been subject to any public comments. Thank you.
Overall, I'd like to say I have visited the site and I've thoroughly reviewed the plans that have been prepared by the architect and the staff report. And I concur with Commissioner Opal that when you look at 33901 and you look at 33921, you know, between fifty-three feet and roughly thirty-four feet, this is smack in the middle, number one. Number two is from curb to the top of the roof is twenty-one feet and eight inches or thereabouts. And that falls within the within the parameters. Also, the allowable area versus what they are asking. You know, the point here is that anytime there's a vacant lot, the adjacent people are at risk because they don't know what's going to be built there. Just because they built a home which met their requirements doesn't mean that in another person coming there would build the same type of home. So that's, there is no such guarantee. And, you know, when you look at the right of the property owner to develop the property within the means and as far as variance is concerned, each variance is treated on its own merit. Just because this home gets a variance, another person, let's say, within the same block, you can't assume that if one variance is granted, the other will be granted because it needs to meet the criteria, number one. Number two, we need to make the findings. And as far as I'm concerned, I can make the findings on each one of the findings on this particular project. And with that, I'll close my comments.
Thank you.
Do you have something to say about that? Because I think this is a, for me, it's very complicated because I appreciate you guys all coming out. I think, I had two thoughts on it. I grew up in, you know, where there was a vacant lot, we knew they were going to be building at some point. But there's also the assumption that they're building within the zoning code. So, you know, as much as you can say, well, we knew something was going to be built there. Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, you know, knowing that there is a vacant lot, but as a homeowner, you would assume that it would be built within the zoning code. I also take exception to, not exception, but I think that there is a difference between this home and the surrounding homes. I think, you know, from the Primavera, it's a little bit more uniform, but then once you are looking through the canyon, it is, it's a very substantial property, which, you know, is within their rights as the homeowner. But it's within our rights as the commission to grant the variance or not. So I'm struggling with this one a bit. So that's where I'm at. So I'm struggling with this one a bit, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Gonzalez, that was very good. Thank you all of the community for coming out and providing feedback and opinion for us to help make the findings here, one way or the other, with all the facts and information that we received, all of the correspondence, so, you know, gentleman who is reading that correspondence, we have copies, so thank you. I, I think we've probably all had time to go through it now. Staff was working with us to get it to us, and I've reviewed the file, agree with a lot of different things that, like Commissioner Dinger was saying about the facts at hand here, and what we're looking at. And for me, on this one, it, it is complicated, I agree, because of the idea that we're dealing with a variance, and like Commissioner Opal was saying, these hillside conditions lend themselves to variances that we have granted in the past, because they do have difficult topography that they have to deal with. Not that any of it sets itself up, as Commissioner Dinger was saying, for any precedential value that, you know, someone can say, well, that one got it, so I should get it. I mean, no two lots in Dana Point are going to be the same with our topography anyway, and we do look at the history, and, you know, that's what Ms. Gonzalez has shown us in terms of the neighboring properties and the diagrams, and where this fits in, since even before Dana Point times. So there is a lot to look at here. You know, Mr. Glushon, who came up representing the Moores, it's good to get that feedback too, in terms of, you know, what he thinks the most critical criteria is for granting the variance, you know, looking at whether this is materially injurious to the community at large, or his client in particular. You know, and to what some of my fellow commissioners were saying, when you look across the canyon, like, you know, I guess we're looking at, you know, the about 10-foot difference that it would have been with the variance or without, but it, it's almost like, at a certain level, some of these comments are thinking that it's going to remain an empty lot, or like a park forever, and we're talking about a right to develop at some point in the future here. And so, for me, I guess the question would be, you know, when you look at some of these pictures, like, for example, there's one from the Moores' house, where, you know, it's one of their windows with, you know, a couch up against it, kind of facing away from the window, but that window, it looks like, would be hurt by, and the view there, hurt by property coming in. What's not shown here, alleged, that I've heard, is how any house getting built there would be any different than the variance we're talking about here. And I think that is substantial evidence that we can hang our hat on right now, if we do want to go forward with making the findings that we need to make for the variance here. And if that wasn't clear, I can go on, but I think we've probably been talking about this long enough. You know, and, and I do want to say also to the homeowners, I am sympathetic to this concept. I used to have an ocean view, and no longer really have any at all. And it's not, you know, apples to apples, your guys' view, I'm sure, has been much better than mine. It was a very small one, that is essentially gone, and I do miss it. I was looking at a picture at it today, from On This Day, you know, about 10 years ago, and reflecting on how nice that was, but, you know, whether that's a $200,000 loss, I think that is probably an exaggeration, and I didn't see any data backing that up. So, you know, at a certain level, a lot of the complaints, I feel like, are, are, are a lot of the issues raised are kind of of the common, you know, does anyone want a construction project going on next door, and any house at all there?
No.
I, I get that there's a difference, but at a certain level, I think a little bit of what we're dealing with is that issue as well.
No, I, I agree with you.
Ma'am? I'm going to have to ask you to step out if you can't keep your comments to yourself. We're conducting a public hearing, this is our turn, you've had your chance to speak, you want us to respect you. We'd like to have the exact same thing back up here, please. Thank you.
Final comments, you know, we've talked about how the code, a gentleman came up and was talking about how the code protects views, and I, I get that they're probably referring to just the concept that, you know, they're looking at the code and the zoning ordinance as, you know, one thing, and when there's a variance, it's a little bit different, but just want to flag that there are no, you know, negative easements or view corridors in the code as well. So with that, I, I, I do think there's been a lot of consideration here over the years, and appreciate the architect coming up and speaking as well. And I think I can make the findings to support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I too appreciate everybody coming out, a lot of, you know, this is a complex matter, it is, you know, it's not lost on me, the concerns that were raised tonight, some of them are concerns that we don't have any oversight over, and others we do. You know, when I look at this project, I look at the topography of the site, the proposed elevations, our zoning code, developing on the site without a variance for something would likely be impossible. So, you know, the question there is, you know, what's the right variance? And you, that's not our job, we're not designers, we're not architects, we look at what is put in front of us, and make a determination based on that. I think one, you know, one, not simple fix, one change could be moving the home closer to the street. What that would do is bring the building closer to the street, reduce the overall height as we measure it, which is not the height of the building, but where it touches the ground. And that, unfortunately for this particular site, you know, that grade that they're chasing is pretty substantial, not only downslope, but crossslope. And again, that's not our call, we, we could sit up here and try to redesign every project, and we'd never get to go home, and we don't have the authority or the right to do that, so we have to look at what's presented to us. So when I look at just even the first test of our, of our variance, if we use the literal interpretation of our zoning code, that you absolutely could not build here by right, and, and again, I think Commissioner Opal touched on it a little bit, this building and what's been proposed is well within the bounds of our zoning code, from all the setbacks, from the FAR, the floor area ratios and lock coverage, the only issue that it doesn't comply with is the height. And I think, you know, that's an important thing to note. The, the other thing I would, you know, note here is, as I stated before, is that this site is probably one of the most challenging sites, at least on this street, with a crossslope that on one edge of the building, it's within the, the bounds of our zoning code, and on the other end of the building, it falls well with outside, well outside that, and trying to balance, you know, the engineering of a structure as well as the design, so that it includes a driveway where people can get to it, as well as a staircase, and all those other things are, are things that, again, we don't control, it's kind of the nature of, of hillside conditions. The, I don't think granting a variance here would be a special privilege, I know that we've granted not many variances, at least in my tenure as a planning commissioner, but they're studied, and generally, we only support them when they make sense, and, and, you know, at this point, I don't see, well, I can make the findings for the variance, all seven of them, to me, seem fairly straightforward and easy to make those findings. Again, I don't discount some of the commentary, I, you know, living in a, in a community with homes next to everybody, there are privacy issues, and those are issues that, while we can do some things up here, we have limited control over that as well. I don't think this is a, a variance that would be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, I know that was raised by one of the speakers tonight. And I think I'll just end with, you know, I can make the findings for this, I understand the, the concerns of the community, and up here, you know, we review the code, and I would, I'd just probably add one other thing, and it was talked a lot about, about our zoning code, and our zoning code includes variances, it's part of our code, and it's in there for a very specific reason, to allow developments to move forward that cannot comply with the literal interpretation of our code. And that is a project like we've seen here tonight, by definition, this project on its own fits within the framework of our variances, and I can make all of the findings for not only the variance, but as well as the site development permit, based on the conditions of the site, the topography, and the crossslope. With that, I'll look for a motion.
I would move to approve variance V25-0001, and site development permit SDP25-0010, to allow the development of a three-story, single-family dwelling and attached garage in a hillside condition exceeding the maximum allowable building height, and to construct an over-height retaining wall located within the front yard setback at 33911 Kai La Primavera, and adopt the conditions and resolution as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
All right, that's a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have four yeses and one opposed? Okay, get that, great. All right, that item carries. Thank you very much for your time and your testimony tonight. Moving on to item number three, is a tentative map, or TPM 2025-126, and a conditional use permit, CUP 25-003, to convert an existing duplex to condominiums on a single lot at 34622 Camino Capistrano.
Natalie Tran, how's your staff report?
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Natalie Tran, and this project for you is for tentative parcel map, TPM 2025-126, and conditional use permit, CUP 24-0003, located at 34622 Camino Capistrano. The subject site is located in the residential duplex 14 zoning district, and is outside of the coastal zone as delineated by the blue line. It is surrounded by other single-family and multifamily dwellings, as well as single-family coastal bluff development to the south. Now here are pictures of the front elevation of the subject site before and during construction. The existing duplex has been issued permits for remodel and addition. Here are pictures of the neighboring properties, which are similar two-story structures. To give some background, the existing duplex was built in 1962 and was legal, non-conforming to parking. However, last year, the applicant was approved for a minor conditional use permit and a minor site development permit, allowing a tandem duplex parking arrangement and two new roof decks in association with additions and a full remodel to the duplex. The permits will make the duplex fully conforming to the zoning code. Since then, the project has been under construction. And now today, the same applicant is proposing to subdivide the parcel for the purpose of creating condominiums, allowing the individual dwelling units to be sold separately. According to the zoning code, the conversion of dwelling units into condominiums requires planning commission approval of a tentative parcel map and a conditional use permit. Now here's the application, applicant submitted tentative parcel map, where you can see the layout of the two units in relationship to each other on the lot. And here is their preliminary condominium plan, which shows how the private and common interests of the lot will be divided between the two residences. So here you can see how the parking and the outdoor spaces and the first-floor areas are divided between Unit A and Unit B. The preliminary condo plan was reviewed by planning, building, and engineering staff in conjunction with the submitted draft CCNRs, to ensure consistency between the documents and with previous entitlements and the city's municipal code. Here are the preliminary condo plans for the second floor and the roof decks as well. As part of the application, condo conversions are required to comply with the applicable development standards of their zoning district. And in the case of this property, the previously improved entitlements will bring the duplex into full conformance with the development standards of the RD14 zoning district, as shown by this table. Condos are also required to provide high-quality urban design through architectural enhancement, landscape improvements, and construction. These items were reviewed and approved as part of their proposed remodel and additions. Condo conversions must also provide privacy between units, individual gas and electric metering systems, and trash collection for each unit. These requirements will be included as revisions to their approved construction documents, or a separate permit as necessary. And finally, while the duplex is currently vacant and under construction, the draft resolution includes specific conditions regarding tenants' rights of first refusal if the units are occupied prior to the final map recordation. Last but not least, this project is aligned with the city's housing element goals. In comparison to single-family dwellings, condos provide a more affordable option for homeownership for first-time buyers and moderate household, moderate-income households. Goal four of the housing element is to conserve and improve the condition of the existing stock of affordable housing. And per Program 4.4, as outlined over there, it is specifically to promote and assist the public with condominium conversions. So based on this analysis and the project's compliance with the city's general plan, and zoning, and subdivision ordinances, staff determines that the required findings can be made to support this project pursuant to the attached resolution. Therefore, staff recommends approval of tentative parcel map, TPM 2025-126, and conditional use permit, CUP 25-0003. Staff and applicant are present tonight to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the staff report. Any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
Vice Chair?
No questions.
Nope. I have no questions, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do you have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and a vote.
It's fairly simple and straightforward, I, I can make the findings.
Agree.
Good.
No additional comments.
All right, hearing no other additional comments, I too can make the findings, I think this is great to actually subdivide and actually have some smaller units that are available on a, pretty close to the coast. I don't see any reason not to approve this, and would look for a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution approving tentative parcel map, TPM 2025-126, and conditional use permit, CUP 25-0003.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that item carries, congratulations. Moving on to the next item of business is a recommendation, a consideration of a recommendation to the city council to adopt an ordinance approving Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 25-0003, and repealing ordinance number 22-01, which added Chapter 9.72 and Chapter 7.37 to the city of Dana Point's municipal code. Sir?
Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. California Senate Bill SB9, enacted in 2021, allows for duplex development on single-family lots in most of California neighborhoods. In response to this legislation, the city adopted ordinance 202001 in 2022 to implement SB9 locally. This ordinance introduced Chapter 9.72, which governs single-family duplexes, and Chapter 7.37 pertaining to urban lot splits in the Dana Point Municipal Code. However, due to subsequent revisions to SB9 at the state level, the provisions established by ordinance 22-01 are now rendered outdated. Consequently, city staff have been applying the current state law directly to SB9 applications, rather than relying on obsolete municipal code provisions. Recently, the California Department of Transportation issued a special notice to Recently, the California Department of Housing and Community Development requested that the city update its municipal code to eliminate the outdated ordinance, thereby aligning local regulations with the programs outlined in the city's housing element. In response to this request, the city council approved an urgency ordinance, which remains in effect until the required process is followed, to permanently repeal ordinance 22-01. Tonight's agenda item constitutes the initial step towards this repeal. Once ordinance 22-01 is formally repealed, the city will operate solely on their current state law, which staff has been applying in practice for a while now. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve this action and recommend that the city council adopt a zone text amendment repealing ordinance 22-01, including chapters 9.72 and 7.37 of the Dana Point Municipal Code. Thank you for consideration. I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. I have a lot of commentary, but it's probably not pertinent here. So just, just to make sure I understand, what continues to happen is the state continues to change the rules, and we are not able to keep up with the changing landscape of our housing legislation.
That is correct, sir. And our municipal code is now obsolete, and so staff has been following what is in the state code. And so now we're just taking our municipal code off the books, and we'll just be going by state code from here on out.
Got it. All right, thank you. All right, with that, open the public hearing. Do you have any speakers?
No public comments.
All right, thank you. Closing the public hearing, bring it back for a motion and a vote. And out of an abundance of time, I will make the motion to recommend to the city council to adopt the ordinance approving the zone text amendment as noted in the staff report.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that item carries. Which brings us to next item of business. This is old business, we have none, new business, I don't see any. Do we have any staff reports?
I do have a staff report. I wanted to recognize Natalie Tran, who just stepped out. She took a position with the city of Mission Viejo, and this was her last PC meeting. So she did an excellent job here. She's getting promotion, and we're all very proud of her. So, good job, Natalie.
Yeah, congratulations, Natalie. All right, thank you. And then Commissioner comments.
No comment.
Look forward to seeing everyone at the Turkey Trot on, do we have one more meeting before then? No? Probably not. So, yep, I'll see you all there.
I'll be there.
I will, but enjoy your run.
Yeah. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, which will be held on November 24, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter here at 33282 Golden Lantern.